Good, how are you?
I'm good, good. Enjoying the nice weather today.
Yeah, so warm, eighty-four degrees. And the only thing is I'm upstairs, and so it gets hot up here. So, good thing I have the windows, and it's starting to cool down now, so.
Yeah, it's, I love this weather. I, this is my favorite.
I love it when I can get out, you know? But if I'm at home, and, and my, my home stays pretty cool. Stays, you know, pretty cool for most of the time. And then late afternoon, it might get a little hot upstairs. So that's, that's kind of how it works around here.
Yeah. Our, our house is pretty cool, too. Hey Jonathan.
I, I don't know if, um, Chair Brittany Murphy is going to be here today, so I think I'll be chairing, so. Lauren said that between her and Noah, they'll come and help me along.
Sure. I ended up, um, I did the, I, um, watched the December seventh meeting, so I could vote on that.
Okay.
So we can do all of the minutes.
Just fix my name on here. One L? Okay.
I know, a lot of times it comes under my name, or John's name.
Oh, and it comes up as John.
Yeah, well, I'm not John.
Make sure I have everyone's names. Oh, there it is right here. So. Chair, or Commissioner Moore? I'm just trying to get the names down. Commissioner Hancock? Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
So that's, and then, and then, Commissioner Moore. I had, actually, I was on vacation last week. A good thing I remembered to check my emails and make sure.
Where'd you go?
Actually, I went to Maui. I was in Maui.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, it was, it was really nice and relaxing.
Just for a week?
Just actually four days. It was even the whole week. Yeah, just four days.
We're taking off, my daughter's graduated from college at the end of May, so we're going to Long Beach. Doing a long weekend, yeah.
Nice. Yeah, and going in May, my stepson's getting married in San Diego, end of May. So we're gonna take another few days and go off, go to San Diego.
Yeah, we'll be down there the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, all the way through Monday.
Okay. In May?
In May.
Yeah, so we'll probably be in San Diego the same time period.
Nice. Yeah, we have a lot of family in Long Beach, so it was nice to, um, my youngest was going to college down there, and obviously she came home.
But that Monday, there's no meeting, right? Is, is that the morality?
Yes.
Okay, good, so there's no meeting for Monday.
So, the nice part about that is that she had a bunch of cousins that lived down there, and so we get to see all the cousins and, yeah. It'll be good.
A little mini families.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be fun. We always, uh, and my, my son's coming down from Portland, and then, um, just one of my kids won't be able to make it, but the other two. And she'll be able to watch her walks is done.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, my, um, so they're having just the wedding, just the ceremony. You can have an reception. So, we're going, it's just a one-hour ceremony. You get, there's a place in, store in Balboa Park in San Diego where they have weddings and, and Inimori Palace?
How nice.
Something, it's, 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 um, she's Vietnamese, and so family Vietnamese, um, so it's, it's just a ceremony.
How fun is that?
This could be a lot, a lot of fun, yeah, it's gonna be a lot of fun, so.
That's a blending of some families right there.
Yeah. So, let's see, a little Italian, a little Mexican, a little white, and then Vietnamese, you know, so it's a good combination.
It is, I, um, we have a pretty good blended family that way, so. My aunt used to say, it's nice to get new blood in.
Yeah, that's pretty, that's true. All right, so she, almost seven.
Vice Chair Lemus, I do show seven P M. If you'd like to call the meeting to order.
Okay, um, so I want to call the meeting to order Monday, May third, twenty twenty-one. Uh, can we do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Rodriguez. Commissioner Rodriguez?
Was on here earlier, I don't know if he fell off, he was on here earlier.
Vice Chair Lemus, I will come back to him, and Commissioner Hancock. Commissioner Moore?
Present.
Vice Chair Lemus?
Present.
And I will show Chair Murphy as absent. And we'll, we'll go back to Commissioner Rodriguez one more time. If you can tell us if you're present. We'll try and get in touch with him, um, if, if you'd like to, to move on.
Okay. Okay, so, um, let me see, let's move to approval of minutes. So, we would ask for the approval of the minutes of December seventh, twenty twenty?
Actually, Vice Chair Lemus, I just realized, we, uh, don't have enough commissioners yet to vote with the absence of Commissioner Rodriguez.
If we don't have a quorum, what do we do in this instance?
We can, uh, have the meeting minutes pushed to the next meeting if, if that works for everybody. I'll leave that up to you, and just let me know.
Okay, so, um, then we'll go ahead and push them, uh, to the next meeting if, since, um, there's not enough people to vote on the minutes.
Okay, and then we can just go ahead and move on.
Okay, so is there any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Vice Chair Lemus.
Thank you. And then now that I asked if we can share about oral communications we received?
Vice Chair Lemus, there is nothing further.
Nothing further, okay.
And I will, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'll just interject real quick, and I will advise that this time we also have no attendees.
No attendees, okay. Okay, so then we'll go ahead and move to F, matters at hand, so it's the report. Number one, it's the twenty, twenty housing, um, the housing, annual housing report?
Thank you, Vice Chair, this is Noah House, Queenville, the Director, I will be presenting this item. Uh, thank you, Ms. Burgess, for bringing up the PowerPoint. See, I'll just go ahead and get, get started. Uh, so this is both the presentation of the annual housing production report, uh, and a brief legislative update, um, on some pending legisla, adopted and pending legislation that will be affecting kind of some of our work plans moving into the next fiscal year. Uh, it's an informational presentation, just to bring the commissioners up to speed. Uh, no action is needed, but, uh, staff will be available to answer any questions or provide any further clarifying information as needed. And Lauren, we'll go to the next slide. Uh, so just as a way of background, um, and this will be a little bit of a, of a, um, recap of what we talked about in our land use one-to-one presentation, but all cities and counties in California are required to have a general plan, and one of the required elements of the general plan is the housing element. Uh, housing element's updated on a four- or an eight-year cycle, and most cities and counties are on an eight-year cycle, the four-years, uh, punitive cycle. And housing elements are required to provide an analysis of a community's housing needs and strategies to respond to and provide for those needs. And since nineteen eighty, the states required us, the cities and counties, to provide a report as to our progress on meeting our, both our, our regional housing needs assessment, which we'll get into more a little later, and also how we are moving forward with, uh, implementing the, uh, strategies to respond to and provide to those needs that are identified. Uh, the city has already, uh, provided a report to the state and submitted it. We presented it to the City Council last month, however, uh, we did feel it was an important, uh, informational item of the planning commission, uh, here, and we will be presenting this every year, and we will try to present it to the planning commission ahead of the City Council moving forward. However, the April first deadline is a hard deadline, and so sometimes we'll have to kind of juggle, um, which body hears these, uh, the production report first. Um, our annual housing needs assessment, or our R E N A, is provided by the Association of Bay Area Governments and N T C. Uh, that's our council of governments. Uh, and it's worth noting that housing elements and annual reports have been subject, uh, to a lot of new legislation. Uh, and significant changes will be required as we move into the next housing element cycle starting in twenty twenty-three. Lauren, if you could go to the next slide? Uh, so this is the summary of where we are with meeting our R E N A, just specifically the, uh, construction of housing units. Uh, as of December of twenty twenty, uh, in this cycle, since two thousand fourteen, the city had issued a hundred building permits, uh, for new home construction, which is seventy-two percent of our R E N A. I saw in the staff report, there was a typo saying sixty percent, so sorry for that. Uh, and Lauren, if you'll, uh, just advance the slide one more time, it'll identify that we have thirty-seven units remaining in our R E N A. Um, the planning commission, the City Council, uh, have approved a number of projects, uh, that would ultimately result in us meeting our R E N A numbers with maybe the exception of the very low units. You can tell those have been challenging for us to meet, uh, with twenty-eight of the thirty-five originally allocated still remaining to be constructed. Uh, however, staff is confident that we would, um, and are likely to meet our R E N A. However, as you can imagine, the COVID-nineteen pandemic has introduced a lot of uncertainty regarding getting projects constructed. Um, some really odd kind of supply chain impacts, and sure, some of you have seen some of the headlines regarding the price of lumber. Uh, but not just lumber, but we're hearing across the board, construction materials, um, are really impacted, uh, by these, the, the pandemic, uh, related supply chain issues and other kind of supply and demand challenges. Uh, and just, there's a, there's a pretty, uh, in-depth summary of how we are doing in, in, uh, kind of implementing some of the projects that have been approved, uh, in the staff report. I'll just highlight that the Katati Village project, which included thirty-seven single-family homes. The developer has, uh, listed that property for sale, and has indicated they are not going to pursue construction of that project. Uh, Katati Station, which is seventy-four apartment units directly adjacent to the Smart Station on Santara Way. Uh, the, the developer is not intending to move forward with that, however, that it is for sale, and that they are actively courting, uh, buyers who would be intending to move forward with construction. Uh, the planning commission may recall that the City Council, uh, indicated that they would support this project being built as a hundred percent affordable housing project, putting three-quarters of a million dollars in as, as additional subsidy. Uh, Bridge Housing was the potential developer, and they've backed out of that deal, so, uh, it's backed up the market to be sold as either a market rate project as it was approved, with a significant number of density bonus affordable units, or, uh, if it was to be pursued by a affordable housing developer, they would, uh, engage with the city if they had a request for funding, which is typical of affordable housing, just to be aware of. Uh, Lauren, if you would just advance to the next slide? Oh, I'm sorry, uh, I should mention, Kessing, uh, is fully under construction, and they've either submitted for or pulled all building permits for the homes in those, in that subdivision, that's forty-seven single-family homes. Uh, and we do anticipate construction of their seven below-market-rate units to start within the month. So, uh, within the month, we will have issued building permits for all, uh, the units in Kessing, including the affordable housing units, the seven affordable housing units. And Jamie Lane, uh, we do anticipate receiving building permits in the middle for that project, uh, within the next thirty to forty-five days. And so that's another, uh, affordable housing effort that the city has supported, that we do anticipate being, uh, at least starting construction this summer. Uh, getting into kind of a summary of the, of the meat of the report, uh, we constructed twenty new units in, in twenty twenty. Uh, sixteen single-family homes and four accessory dwelling units. Uh, they were all constructed as market rate, meaning there's not been any deed restrictions. However, our report did count some of them as affordable housing based on the anticipated levels of rent that, that the, uh, A D Us are likely to rent as. And that's allowed by H C D in cities counting their efforts towards meeting their affordable housing. So some of those credits that you see, uh, us taking advantage for, uh, and or take advantage of, or credit for in the production report, are actually A D Us that we anticipate being rented at below-market rate levels, so just be aware of that. Uh, and then, it's always interesting to compare year over year, so in, in two, two thousand nineteen, we issued, uh, building permits to build seven units, and, and four of those were A D Us, three of them were single-family. So, uh, A D Us have been consistent year over year, four in each year, but, uh, single-family home construction has significantly increased, and it's almost completely due to the Kessing, uh, rent subvention, just to be aware of that. Table D, uh, of the production report is kind of a summary of where the city is in, uh, implementing efforts to meet the housing element policies, and that was attached to the commission's report. Uh, we've been making a number of website improvements to share information with the public, and that includes, uh, housing page and the code enforcement page, uh, which is, the code enforcement page is not yet published, but it's about to be. Uh, we're intending to implement inclusionary hous, housing requirements on all projects over ten units. Lot of coordination over the last two years with regional partners, A B A G and N T C, uh, but also with the Housing Land Trust, and also the Community Development Commission of the County. We do anticipate some future housing policy work to keep working towards implementing those housing element goals. Uh, and one of the benefits is we have received some grant funding from the state, so that's covering a lot of the staff time, uh, to, to pursue those goals. Uh, and we're looking to see, uh, kind of drill down on some of the impacts regarding construction costs and financing concerns, to see where the city can, uh, kind of make some changes or, or some efforts to try to, um, incentivize things, or, or do what we can to, to, to support housing development. Obviously, the commission was, uh, instrumental in getting the accessory dwelling unit ordinance completed, thank you for your work on that. Uh, and then, it's worth noting that we, we are, uh, partnering with R C P A, uh, through their Climate Action Twenty Twenty Plan, and anticipate bringing some greenhouse gas reduction efforts before the planning commission and the City Council next fiscal year, uh, with the goal of implementing that Climate Action Plan Twenty Twenty that, that R C P A has been working on. Uh, and then lastly, as identified in the housing on the table D, the city has policies to support buy-right housing, uh, and the city staff have been working to implement those policies and respond to some of the legislative actions from the state that are further pushing housing as a buy-right land use, and trying to, uh, reduce where they can some of the, um, I think, the discretionary elements and even C Q O review. So we'll go to the next slide. Briefly to touch on the process remaining for, uh, getting our next R E N A allocation. So in this spring, uh, basically this month, we anticipate getting our R E N A draft numbers from, uh, A B A G N T C. Um, and that's, it's worth noting, I'm sorry, that's R E N A methodology, it's, that's a typo, uh, is based on statutory objectives, so some things in the law that the legislature have set, and local input that they've gained through the last year, uh, from all the, um, nearly a hundred cities in the Bay Area. Uh, I think it's a hundred and nine, actually. Through the summer and fall, uh, they're gonna relieve, the release these draft allocations, and then that will allow the, uh, appeal process to begin. So some jurisdictions choose to appeal their allocations directly to, to the State Department of Housing and Community Development, H C D. Uh, and that process takes place during the summer and fall, and then in the winter, we'll get our finer, final allocations, uh, which will then allow the housing element process to really kick off in earnest over the year of twenty twenty-two, with the housing element must be adopted and submitted to H C D, the state, by January of twenty-three. So, uh, city staff does anticipate getting a, uh, request for proposals out within the next two weeks for our housing element update. We'll try to, uh, secure a contract with a consultant to assist us with that, and we have put a budget request into the City Council as a part of the next fiscal year's budget to help cover the costs associated with that. We'll go to the next slide. So while, uh, the numbers have not been formalized, and they are kind of still, um, draft, these numbers are what, uh, A B A G N T C has shared with local organ, local government. And, uh, Lauren, if you'll advance the slide once, it'll highlight Katati is conceptually thinking we will see two hundred and sixty-seven units allocated to us for the next eight-year cycle. That's in comparison to the hundred and forty-three that we had in last year's cycle, which, uh, I'm sorry. That's in comparison to the hundred and forty-three that we had in last year's cycle, which, uh, I'm sorry, the last cycle, which really came out of the recession and, and really tried to uh, to, to accept and acknowledge the fact that uh, you know, the great recession was a huge impact on the ability to get anything, anything constructed and financed. Uh, so we are seeing a significant increase there, but I think one of the most uh concerning numbers that we're seeing from our partners across Sonoma County, Lauren, if you'll advance the next slide or click to advance, you'll see unincorporated Sonoma County being allocated over fifty-two hundred units. And so we really worked to push back on that process through the Housing Methodology Committee, uh, identifying that, you know, where would these units go in areas that are either constrained by uh fire risk, lack of infrastructure, you know, most of the county development is on septic and wells. Uh, that's not a good mix for uh getting five thousand units built. And so what that's likely to do is push the county to try to get development to occur on the edges of cities within our sphere of influences where they can try to push for extension of city utilities, which would actually allow these units to be built. And so I know the county is very concerned with that number, uh, and they're trying to engage with A-BAG, NTC uh to, I'm, I'm sorry, with the, the housing and community development folks at the state to see where uh there can be some flexibility in sharing of units. Uh, some of the other things that some of the recent state law has really affected and, and, and put a damper on county's ability to kind of partner with cities and, and share uh uh credit for, for developing just outside the city limits, but under the county jurisdiction. So more to come on that, but just know that from all the communities in Sonoma County, that's probably the most concerning number. Uh, and, and it's worth noting, Santa Rosa has, although they have the highest number, they've indicated they're willing to take more. So just be aware of that as you have your policy discussions uh amongst the community members and even with state legislators. Because if there was an allowance to allow some kind of trading of units from the county into the cities, there, there may be, uh, that may help kind of push back on some of the tendencies of sprawl that, that these numbers may start to try to uh kind of push folks into the direction. I'll go to the next slide, please. Uh, so now changing gears, uh, we're just going to talk about some of the pending legislation and things that were actually adopted. Um, so just to touch on the themes, obviously, you know, pandemic impacts on housing, we've, we've all been in tenants. We've all been kind of seeing some of the, the tenant protections and the further support, the state funding for uh trying to address the unhoused issues that, and find some supportive housing efforts um that we've seen come out of the twenty twenty legislative process. Uh, that's really been the focus a, as we would all expect. However, there's been some other movement on increasing density and continuing streamlining uh development incentives and identifying adequate sites. And there was a little bit of effort towards well recovery, recovery, wildfire recovery and hazard mitigation. Although uh from a lot of local folks' perspective, it wasn't really enough. Or those issues weren't really built into the housing uh assumptions enough uh from folks who live in, in areas that are highly affected by that. Uh, what we're hearing from some of the American Planning Association, um legislative team and their lobbyists are that these themes are expected to continue into twenty twenty-one. And a lot of the bills that were uh originally thought to be going up in twenty twenty, uh, that's were kind of supplanted or, or uh put to the side to, while we tried to address uh the COVID impacts, are expected to come back in twenty twenty-one. So uh, what we're hearing is it may be a banner year for housing legislation uh with some of these themes in mind or, or kind of underlying some of the efforts. We'll go to the next slide. I'm just going to touch on some of these bills specifically. There's a lot more detail in the staff report. Uh, but so there was an amendment to the housing, the density bonus law going from thirty-five percent increase to fifty percent increase. And this law also touches on the uh allowed parking requirement. So it even reduced the amount of parking that cities can require uh for housing developments that are taking advantage of density bonus units. Uh, there was some effort to clean up SB thirty-five, which uh you'll hear more about for in the next item as we present the objective design guidelines. Uh, and the big issue here was there was some perceived ambiguity uh about some of the ministerial processes. Uh, and those two bills, AB one sixty-eight and A thirty-one are intended to, to clarify that, yes, this is a ministerial process and even some of the outside elements such as public infrastructure must be ministerial and cannot be made discretionary. Uh, there was AB fifteen sixty-one, which granted some kind of blanket entitlement extensions for eighteen months uh to projects that were impacted by COVID nineteen financing, similar to what the city council tried to do on a local level to support the local business community and, and folks who had some projects approved. The state also made some of those actions at the state level. Uh, AB seven twenty-five, missing middle housing. So this is a, this is trying to uh get to some of the things that we talked about through the cottage housing ordinance, so smaller units, more multifamily units. And what this essentially says is that at least twenty-five percent of our pending arena numbers must be identified on sites that allow multifamily housing or uh sites that allow uh up to four units. Uh, so it's just worth noting that they're essentially trying to, to push cities to put some of their arena into multifamily housing with the idea that that's more affordable by design because they're smaller units, more dense, et cetera. Uh, some secret transit exemptions, so transit projects just kind of get, got a little bit broader. CEQA exemptions with the goal to try to streamline and make them happen a little bit more easily. And then some really significant changes to the development review process statewide uh and adding a new government code section, uh, sixty-six-three or six-six-three-zero-zero. Uh, there's more details on this, but essentially cities and counties are limited to uh the policies that we can apply to uh new housing development. And the goal would be that these future developments will only be subject to ordinances and policies that were in effect at, at the time that the application was submitted, and also that all of our requirements are published uh and available on our, on our website and in a checklist form. So we've already been moving in this direction, uh, so it's not going to be a huge lift for us. Uh, but it also uh shortens the timeframes for some of the development review decision process after CEQA is completed. And one of the things that's interesting about these changes is it may require the housing development only be uh forced to comply with adopted objective zoning standards. Uh, and this kind of pushes uh even further some of the reasoning why uh staff is bringing forward these objective design guidelines in an effort to get in front of some of these things that the state is essentially, again, trying to make housing more of a buy right process uh and limiting how cities can affect the design of that house. So we'll go to the next slide. So briefly, I just want to touch on some of these things. Uh, there's a push to make Project Home Key permanent and extend the tenant projections uh longer than currently in place. So basically until the pandemic is deemed to be, you know, no longer an emergency. There's some additional wildfire hazard mitigation and modeling, but the, while there's, there's rules and requirements that are published in AB thirty-one seventy-four and AB thirty-sixty-four, they have not been funded yet. So just be aware of that, that even though some bills are being written, the funding necessary to actually get them off the ground isn't necessarily allocated. Uh, there's some additional wildfire planning responsibilities for general plan and arena updates and, and future uh housing legislation. Um, AB twenty-four twenty-one allows backup generators for cell towers as a buy right use. Uh, previously, a lot of cities had those being discretionary. Uh, and then there's, there's a look, there was a law passed that is directing the state, uh, again, through HCD to look at the mitigation fee act and the, the impacts local fees are having on the development of housing. So there may be some more state legislation that further limits our ability to collect impact fees for residential housing. The law requires HCD to study that, but that study has not come out yet. Uh, and then there's just lots more uh law around getting cities and counties to do coordinated planning efforts. I'm not going to get into the details on that, but generally, the trend that we're expecting is more buy right and less CEQA for housing projects. Uh, and again, we're just, as staff, we're seeing it as more and more critical for us to get kind of our, our housing policy house in order so that we, we have the tools in place to affect these projects as much as we can uh when they do come through the door, which, you know, we're starting to see some of these projects trickle into the county. Uh, but this is, we're thinking likely the trend for housing development moving forward, at least for multifamily. Uh, with that, we'll go to the next slide, which is just the recommendation that the planning commission review the provided information, identify any concerns or question, questions. Uh, and that could be in this meeting or in future discussions as we talk about housing issues. Uh, providing a direction to staff on how we respond to these things. And then uh obviously file a report for future discussions. With that, I'm available for any questions.
Vice Charlie Miss, you are muted, just so you're aware, and I do see Neil Hancock.
Okay, I'm sorry. Now, I wasn't sure whether we went to commissioner or went to the public, so it sounds like we go to commissioner since Commissioner Hancock has raised, so we'll go to Commissioner Hancock.
Yes, hello, thank you. Um, sorry for being late on the, on the coming into the meeting. Um, very nice to get an overview. Um, I did get quite a headache in reading through it all. Um, possibly not a direct question relating to um exactly the report, but uh in terms of the expense of housing um and materials, um, I know when I was looking at something twenty years ago, um, and I built an out, I built, built essentially a workshop, a sort of a, uh, an ADU-style building, but not for people, out of straw bales. Um, and um had it fully, you know, accepted and permitted, but it was a process that was very distinctive. Um, and so I, what is there that you know of for people who wanted to, or businesses, housing, that wanted to try something that maybe is a little bit more um a, a change in material concept? Possibly going to, you know, perhaps more of a steel-framed or a um, um, you know, a concrete framed type building? Um, where would that lie within the state? I, I'm thinking it isn't really within, within Catati's reach, but um is there anything going on at the state at that level? Thank you.
Yeah, that's a great question, and you're absolutely right. It, uh, the state basically mandates the building code, which includes alternative uh material and construction types. Uh, and there are uh allowances for a variety of types of materials. And I will say some of, some of the kind of uh challenges are just in uh the fact that so many people have, that are in construction have been doing it the same way for a long time and are not comfortable with kind of certain techniques or change techniques. Uh, so that combined with um, you know, just the challenge of kind of proposing alternative design and getting it engineered, et cetera, does have impacts. I will say I was able to participate in a housing forum, a statewide housing forum. Uh, this was pre-COVID, so probably sixteen months ago now, at, in Sacramento, and they were really looking for alternative ways to get housing built. And there was a number of alternative steel-framed project, products, uh, even some interesting, almost uh modular uh frame construction to where uh the construction can be, it's, everything's pre-designed with very simple instructions. So you could use a lower caliber or lower skilled labor to uh construct tall-framed buildings using metal, uh, internal metal structures. But I would say a lot of those are kind of just getting traction along with modular housing, uh, which is a, is getting traction and is starting to be utilized more and more. Uh, but again, it's kind of a infant infancy and, and there's just resistance to change like everything. And so I'd say we're going to start seeing a lot more of that, I would imagine, but we haven't seen anything come through the building department uh recently.
Okay, Commissioner Moore?
Yes, hi, I, I have a couple of questions. Um, one is on the allocations for Sonoma County in the unincorporated. Um, I, you know, I kind of agree with you, Noah, about um taking some of that um housing allocation. If, if we could, I don't know about the council feels like that, but maybe doing it regionally, if everybody could spread it out and not have one jurisdiction take on the, the bulk of it. Um, that seems fair to me to, to have it that way. Um, just a thought on that, just because I know we are all like trying to figure out how to build all this housing in the next couple of years. Um, another one of my concerns, and I think it's, it, I, I know it's um not legislation that's been passed yet, but it's the parking, bringing the parking down. And I was hoping maybe they could just do that more if you're closer to transit. Um, they could reduce the parking. I don't see, we've just had such issues with parking with projects in the city of Catati over the years. Um, Santero Way and, and, you know, Ryan Lane and just a lot of um problems with, you know, a two-bedroom doesn't always have one or two cars, sometimes they have three or four cars. So anyways, it was just a thought that maybe um those kind of uh things could be, you know, looked at a little bit more closely before they're passed, or at least moist, that it would be better by transit where people could, could utilize the smart train or buses. I don't really have any questions because I think a lot of it's kind of a done deal, but I do feel that um there might be some blowback on this statewide for all of the allocations. Just my own, my own thought. All right, that's me.
And Commissioner Rodriguez, did you have any feedback for staff?
Vice Charlie Miss, I'm going to go ahead and uh go over to the attendees list. I believe that's where he's dialing in from.
Well, I was going to ask if Commissioner Rodriguez had any feedback for staff? I can't hear you. We can't hear you, Commissioner Rodriguez. I don't know if it's just me, but I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes, can you hear me?
It, it's kind of choppy. I'm not sure if everyone else is hearing it like I'm hearing it, you know, choppy?
I'm sorry, I'm using my phone.
Dude, we can hear you over the choppiness, so we're going to try sharing your information.
Uh, yeah, it's parking, parking, underground parking.
Mutual, mutual computer. Mutual computer.
It, it's muted.
It, it's muted.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there underground parking allowed in Catati?
Underground parking absolutely is required or is allowed, that's right. Uh, it just has a, a much more significant cost than surface-level parking, as you would imagine.
Okay. And then, um, for that, how much? For Sonoma County, uh, unincorporated? Um, how much impact would SB thirty-five have on that?
Well, so uh combining a, a arena number of, of, you know, five thousand plus units, SB thirty-five uh allows any, any jurisdiction or a developer proposing to build in any jurisdiction that's not seen as meeting the arena to go through an SB thirty-five process, which is by right. And so um staff is assuming that the county is going to struggle to meet that, that high number, which would then allow any developer proposing a project to utilize SB thirty-five, meaning no CEQA and a buy right process uh to develop within the county.
Okay, um, and then uh there was another question, but it, it left my mind at the moment.
Thank you. And um do I go to the public before the commission is finished? Do I give my comments first and then the public, or do I go to the public? Do I give my comments first, and then the public, or do I go to the public?
If the commissioners have finished their comments, then yes, we can move on to public comment. At this time, I have no public comment.
Okay, I was just going to ask staff about, it looks like the new arena allocation for the next eight years is doubled from the first eight years, from the recent past years. So I'm not sure, given all the conditions that you were mentioning, is there a way we can contest it? Or, I know that we need the housing, but I just feel that with conditions and challenges that you discussed today, that even getting close to that number might be a challenge, even for the next eight years.
Yeah, so once, by the end of this month, we do anticipate getting our formal draft allocation from the local, it's called the council of government, so kind of the regional government, AAG, NTC. Once we get that, we can decide to file an appeal with the Housing Community Development Department of the state. I think there are two jurisdictions in Sonoma County that have indicated they likely will appeal, the county being one of them. But they're trying not to. And so, once we get that, we can decide whether it's worth the effort. I will say, while you are correct, it is, you know, close to double what our previous allocation was. That's consistent almost across the state and definitely in the Bay Area. And Southern California communities are on a different cycle than us. So they've already been given their arena numbers, and they're now adopting their housing elements. And they did not have a very high success rate with challenging. So we're going to kind of, once we get the numbers, we'll weigh all the options. And obviously ask the commissioner of the council if they feel it would be a worthwhile effort. But from my anecdotal perspective, just based on what I've been hearing and the kind of the tone of the state, given that we are a city, we don't have a lot of the constraints, like, you know, high-fires of parity zones designated in the community, we have a smart station. You know, we have a lot of the things that the state would likely look to, to say, to deny in the field. But we will obviously review all options once we get our formal number.
And then my other question that I had was about another climate challenge that we have with the drought. I know that a lot of the homes, and maybe this is not at this point, but maybe more at the building point, where a lot of the homes do have like gray water, where they do irrigation using gray water. But is there other elements in the building that we could kind of account for drought and for water-saving measures?
Yeah, so one of the benefits of new construction is that it helps in the highest stringent standards for water efficiency. So the new homes that are being built now are head and shoulders more efficient in their water use, including irrigation. And so, to your point, the new construction will have the least water use, even of a smaller home that was constructed and has older fixtures. But we will be trying to roll out some rebate programs to help folks either replace their grass. So we, the city does have a cash-for-grass program. And we do have rebate programs for toilets and other fixtures that we can help offset some of the costs that folks are interested in updating their fixtures and landscaping to try to bring down their water use.
Thank you. Okay, so that's all the questions that I had. So it sounds like if there is no one from the public to give comment, then at this point, do we move on to the next topic, or is there another step?
Vice Chair, before we actually move forward, Chair Moore, correction, Commissioner Moore has a comment.
Okay. Commissioner Moore?
I just had a question on, we've done our housing element in the past, Noah. I know like Marin, Belvedere, places like that did not have a housing element that was certified. And they just, when people sued them, they just, you know, basically didn't, I should say, they just didn't do the housing. So they just absorbed the cost of that. And so, I just, I guess I just have a question that way, that if you don't have a certified housing element, I know it was always an issue for us because of, you know, grants and things like that, that we like to apply for and to have a certified housing element, that's a key thing. But what's the cost now of not having a certified housing element? That was my question.
Yeah, so I'd actually have to look up if there's any additional new legal penalties for not getting your housing element certified. But, you know, just recently, the state filed suit against the Southern California community and kind of took over their development review process to force them to approve projects. But that's kind of an extreme version. It's exactly as you're mentioning now. What the state's saying is, you know, they're moving to kind of more of a carrot, more of a carrot approach than the state, and saying, well, if you're not doing this, somebody won't give you your grant funding, you won't qualify for certain infrastructure. So your public works, folks, will not be able to get grants to upgrade your sewer and water systems and your roadways if you're not seen as moving towards trying to build more housing. And I would say even SB 35 is an example of the state legislation saying, cities, if you're not meeting your arena, then we're going to just let developers come into your town and do things by right. So they're kind of using those types of approaches to essentially punish cities who don't at least make significant effort to definitely have a housing element that's certified, but then even say yes and incentivize housing development in general.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. So if there's no further questions, we'll move on to the workshop. So it's workshop number two, multi-family objective design standards, small cell wireless in the public right-of-way.
Hello, Commissioner Lemus and Commissioner Member, the item before you, we'll go onto the PowerPoint, please. Are the objective design standards for multi-family housing and also small cell facilities? Next slide, please. So what's going to happen right now, I'm going to give a brief presentation on the objective design standards, and there'll be public action or public comment. Then for the commissioners to deliberate and provide input to staff. So this is a workshop, there will be no formal action taken. Next slide, please. So on March 1st of this year, the planning commission conducted its first public workshop on proposed design standards, and that was to implement provisions of Senate Bill 35, which is a by-right legislation. The commission also discussed design standards regarding small cell and other telecommunications facilities. Next slide, please. So workshop number one, these are, this is a summary of the comments that we received from the public and the planning commissioners. There was concern that the standards did not require a specific architectural style or styles. The standards seem to be more thoughtful and strict. Information needs to be provided showing possible locations where these standards could be used. There was discussion regarding how could public art be incorporated to the, any large structure, lint walls, and utility cabinets? And staff also brought up the issue regarding open space requirements and the need for those to be more realistic. Next slide, please. So as mentioned before, we're going to all go over the standards. There'll be a paper discussion and questions, and for the planning commission to provide public input, and public input, and next slide, please. So I'll quickly go over what are the objective standards. So these are standards that require no personal or subjective judgment, and are verifiable by reference to no criteria. So what's driving the issue, Noah mentioned, Housing Accountability Act and SB 35, and housing supply and affordability. Next slide, please. So I'll quickly go over the possible locations where these standards could be used in Khatati. So this, these are all on the east side of the city. And what's driving the locations in SB 35, it's actually pretty strict on where you can use these standards. They're essentially for infill sites that are surrounded by development. They're already zoned and planned for housing. And they don't include environmental constraints, such as, they're not in a floodway, they're not in a habitat for plants, rare plants, animals, such as a California tiger silkworm. So all these sites do occur on the east side of the city. So the sites in blue, on the east side of Old Ridewood Highway, these are sites just south of the Walgreens on the east side of the road that are potential sites. They're mostly vacant, they don't include any existing housing. So these are, these are possible sites where these standards could be used. Next slide, please. So I also have a couple of sites on East Khatati Avenue, these are just east of downtown. These are partially developed sites. These are the sites in blue that could have some more development. One of the criteria for using this standard you cannot demolish housing is used by tenants, that's been used by tenants for the last 10 years. So it's very difficult to redevelop a site that already has housing on it and use these standards. So those projects that wish to demolish housing, we need to go through the typical discretionary process that we have. So you can only use these standards if you're not demolishing existing tenant-occupied housing. Next slide, please. And the other sites are basically the areas around Centera Way, which are vacant. They're not critical habitat, they're not occupied by existing tenant-occupied housing. These are the sites in blue on Centera Way, and a couple of sites at the back of some commercial properties on East Khatati Avenue. So these are the other potential sites where these standards could be used. Next slide, please. So I'm going to go over the changes that I've heard since the last workshop. These are the major changes. And the first change is, has to do with location of parking. The previous standards, it allows some garage parking to face the street. The way the standards have been currently written, no parking can face the street. If it's in a garage or part of a parking lot, they cannot be street-facing. The next major change is the style. As discussed at the previous meeting, there was no specific style required. And the commissioners wanted more certainty on the types of project that could be developed. So craftsman-style features are required to use these standards. And the first standard we'll talk about is visible roofs. And for the craftsman style, they need to be low-to-moderate pitched roofs, which are roofs 4 to 12 to 9 to 12 slopes. So if you go down on the, go down to the bottom of this page of the PowerPoint, it show roof pitches, and if you look at the top row, the red arrow, that's a 4 to 12 pitch. So that's a low pitch, so that would be the lowest you could use, and that's typical for craftsman style. Then it'll go all the way up to the next arrow, on the next row, which is 9 to 12. This is the range that would be allowed. These are considered to be low-to-moderately pitched roofs. Anything else would not be allowed for these standards. Those who go down to the bottom of the page, you see much steeper roofs, and so those would not be allowed under these standards. Next slide, please. Ease would be required with a minimum width of 18 inches. So if you look at the example below, this is in a project in Khatati. This project basically includes all the features I'm going to be talking about. So this project includes roof beams on all sides, so that the minimum standard would be 18 inches. The next standard is it includes exposed roof beams and/or roof rafters. Those would be required. So the project below includes both of those features, both exposed roof rafters and roof beams. And the next standard below that is, has to do with the windows, and they shall include divided lights. Needs to be simulated divided lights. They also put, "include surrounds." The windows are going to be double hung, single hung, single hung casement or fixed. So sliding the windows would not be allowed. So the example below includes the windows with those divided lights, includes the surrounds. So these are, this is an example of what would be allowed under these standards. Next slide, please. The one is at the entry door. So the example below is a typical craftsman-style entry door. So these, what would be allowed would be a door with either recessed panels or glazing, or it could be both. And that would be after the developer to choose, he could do a similar door, but once they have recessed panels or windows or both, it would be permitted. Next, next slide, please. This has to do with the exterior materials. So this is below the materials that would be allowed. So developer could choose a minimum of two of the following: solid or concrete-based wood siding, solid wood or concrete-based shingle siding, stucco, brick, and stone. So the example below shows horizontal wood siding. It also includes a brick, so the porches have columns, and the base of the columns is a brick. So this is an example of one project using two different materials. So the way the standard is written, each project would need to use two of these materials. It'd be the applicant's choice of which ones they propose. And as long as they propose these two, they would be approved. And the building materials, they need to be consistent on all elevations. And ground floor units facing the public street, we need to include an entry porch. So an example below, each unit facing the street includes an entry porch. And the minimum dimension allowed would be a six-foot depth by eight-foot width. So that's the minimum that would be allowed for the entry porch. Next slide, please. At the last meeting, there's also quite a bit of conversation about public art, how it could be incorporated into developments and into the cabinets for small cells and other facilities. So the way the standards are written, if you have a wall, let's say it's 20 feet in length, that would be the longest kind of blank wall you could have, and either screen it out with landscaping, trees and shrubs, and also art would be an option for that wall. And there are cases like that in the project. Some type of art would be allowed on the building. And for the cabinets, typically, a lot of cities have public art, city-sponsored projects for cabinets. And typically, these would be city-owned cabinets, like at a traffic signal. And so with the small cells, those cabinets are not city-owned, the city does not control them. But we would be encouraging the providers to be a part of any future city-sponsored program or other programs that's sponsored in the community by non-proper, something like that. So the goal is to get and encourage and allow as an option of public art, where we have cabinets and blank walls. Next slide, please. Open space, at the previous meeting, open space standards were presented. And we got some feedback from architects that reviewed the standards, that they really weren't realistic. They were too prescriptive, requiring lots of open space. And so staff did relook at those and agreed that they needed more work needed to be done on the open space standards. And this is a work in progress, what I want to go over today, kind of the concepts that we're looking at. And the benefits of the open space, which is common in private, include health benefits, enhanced residential setting, it reduces environmental impacts. There are social benefits, safety benefits, and functional benefits to open spacing projects. However, realize that open space standards need to fit the unique needs of the community, and these needs vary by housing type. And bigger is not necessarily better. And what's most important is that these open spaces that are created are used frequently. It's not just leftover space, but something that actually would be used by the residents. And it's important that projects may provide a range of open space types in the same project to meet the different needs of the community. And also we need to recognize that if the project is next to a public park, that the open space standards for the onsite could be reduced. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So I'll go over that quickly, the types of open space types that are typically included in projects. So probably the most common is the common open space. This is typically a courtyard that could be used by all of the residents. A lot of projects also include private balconies and patios that can all be used by the residents of that particular unit. Depending on the size of the project and how it's, number of bedrooms of units. Some projects do include children's play areas. Or also maybe play courts for teens and adults. Swimming pools, indoor recreation, community gardens, rooftop decks and burners, which you may not have heard of, but something relatively new in the United States. There's an example of one, a diagram of, or just rendering of one to the right. Typically, this is a driveway that's also could be useful pedestrians equally, where it's got a special paving pattern that's typically at the same elevation as the curb, has got landscaping incorporated. So this could be used also as a play court. And what I've seen happening since the pandemic is, at least where I live in, kind of any projects in Sonoma County, is residents are using these driveways for social gathering places. Kids come out and ride their bikes. Parents bring out the chairs. They visit, social distance, watch their kids out in the driveways. So this would be a way to have a driveway that's specifically designed for that through its special landscaping and paving. This is something relatively new. And the bottom part of this PowerPoint page, I've already actually discussed those items. So next slide, please. So the challenges of, of the open space, one is the lack of space as we go to generally higher densities. We need to be, need to be more innovative in how, what space we provide. So make sure it's usable, it's going to be used, it's not wasted space. Because we are basically, that's it as a challenge on projects is, is the space that we devote to open space. And also to the more open space to provide and more open space features, obviously there's an increased cost to that, which may allow the developer to get increased rents. And also with increased rents, it becomes less affordable, so that needs to be balanced out. Also with increase in open space, there's also maintenance costs. So I think the goal is to make sure we provide open space that is thoughtful for that particular project, those particular residents. So staff is thinking, the next step would be becoming, becoming up with different standards. And where the applicant could choose between the standards that would work for their particular project, their particular expected population. And that would allow flexibility and hopefully we'll get open space that is more geared towards that specific project and that specific population. So hopefully we, tonight, if we can maybe get, if you have any feedback on this issue or any thoughts, you could let us know so we could incorporate those going forward into the next phase. Next slide, please. So as I said, tonight, we're looking for review of this information, creative input, solicit feedback from the fellow commissioners and commissioners provide input and the staff can incorporate those and move on to the next phase, which would possibly be another workshop or moving on to a public hearing. Next slide, please. That concludes staff's presentation. Are there any questions of staff at this time?
Okay, when I saw a hand. Oh yes, so Commissioner Moore?
Oh, I have a, not a question, but a couple of comments about open space. So I lived 13 years in a fourplex. I guess Neil actually referenced that on Marshway in one of our meetings that I wasn't at. But it has a big area in the middle on Marshway for kids to play and a small little playground in that complex. The reason I referenced that is because we eventually moved over across the way to Page Street to a planned unit development that had no playground, no open space, a park nearby, but when you have small children, very difficult to get everybody to the park, even two blocks away. And I think the quality of our kids' lives was impacted. Even though we bought a place, the apartments were much more child friendly than the place that we bought. So I, I see the open space as such a quality for not only, in Marshway, there was families, but there was also single folks, there was couples. Everybody interact, all of our doors faced this open space, kind of like the cottage housing, but these were built 40, 50 years ago. And I just feel like that was such a key thing to our community. Everybody knew, everybody was, felt safe, our kids felt safe. So I just want to make those comments that living in three different places and three different, going from a single, from an apartment to a condo to a single family home, I think I've experienced it all in Catati. And really, I think the best experience we ever had was in the apartments. And it's because of that open space and because we felt so safe with our children there, that it just really, like I said, built community. And I, I actually, you know, I'm still friends with some of the people that live there. So this is, this is why, because I know when you start packing people into small, lots of smaller units and you don't have the quality of open space, I think that just really impacts people's lives. So I, I know you said there could be a choice for a developer to do like, you know, maybe you choose one, two or three for your open space. And, you know, most developers are going to choose the least amount because obviously there's less impact for them and they don't have to provide it and they don't have to, you know, you know. I, I just know in the long run, if I was a developer, I would choose one that I didn't have to do a lot of open space. So I think we just have to be very aware of that when we build these projects, that open space is such a key factor to having people live close to each other and be a community. So that's my only comment on that.
Commissioner Moore, Commissioner Hancock?
Yes, hello, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I agree with, just from passing that complex and having a peek inside. You know, it's, it's got some characteristics that I think are interesting. And one of them being just how vehicles and that interface is managed. And that takes up space and takes up costs. So I know we're, we're talking a lot about that all the time. And, and so looking at the requirements here, I mean, I have, and the properties that are there, the properties that were identified, you know, most of the, the properties probably wouldn't have a lot of, facing the road. They wouldn't have a lot of parking facing the road. But I, that idea of really trying to minimize the parking. And I've seen places around Rona Park, which are more, again, condominiums that I think the parking is, is more focused. But how to make the parking less of an asphalt, hot asphalt surface and a green zone. And there's actually another place I've just come across in Rona Park where they've, they've got this interlaced concrete. And I think that's for fire access. It's not certainly for normal vehicles. But it's, it's again, how can you get better utilization of the, of the space and require simple vehicular access or allow for simple vehicular access? I mean, I, I think there's something in there of saying that a lot of people need that vehicular access of some sort. And we just don't know where that is. If you've got a lot of students living there or, or, you know, two bedroom place being shared by two couples for low cost. So how do you minimize, how do you do something that you can minimize the cost of the vehicles? But also looking at all those, those potential places. You don't want a lot of people parking, I guess, in access in Old Redwood Highway or East Catati Avenue. But certainly make it so that there doesn't need to be a lot of vehicular. The, the cost of the vehicular parking is perhaps pretty small and maybe doesn't require internal garages, vehicles. But, so I think that's, that's all. I mean, it's, the, the actual, what we look at, what, what the, by right, the objective standards seem to be saying, you know, do it in a particular way, which we like in Catati. But that seems to also be raising the bar on expense. And I, I don't know where the middle ground is for that. How do you have something that is a lower cost multifamily that can also be friendly? And certainly Marshway, I think, has, has a characteristic that works, that's very interesting. With parking underneath that's very accessible, houses on top facing into a courtyard, which can be safe and, and isolate where the dangerous traffic is. So thank you very much, that's my comment.
Thank you. And what about Commissioner Rodriguez? Do you have any feedback with staff? Commissioner Rodriguez, no, no feedback with staff?
Yeah, can you hear me? I just wanted to agree with Commissioner Moore about, you know, open spaces, open spaces being important. I've grown up in apartment complexes with, you know, a really small, open space courtyard to none at all, or to ones with really big courtyards. And currently I live on Santero Way. And the condos face into like a, a grass area, but I never see many people utilizing it. So how do we get tenants to want to use those open spaces? And not making them too big and they go to waste kind of the thing? That's just my concern.
Thank you. So my comments are, I, I feel like Commissioner Moore said all the right words that I was thinking. Because the thing that stood out to me was the value of the open space for, you know, for the families and, and individuals that are living there. And I know that, that, that we're going to provide options for them to choose. But I think that we should also, in preparation of developing the standards for the open space designs, is kind of trying to just really making sure that we have the right options there for. And I don't know if, if, if it's different for family units versus maybe senior units, you know, if there's a difference. So that's a question that I would have, if, if there's a difference in a couple of options we can have. But really just trying to really put emphasis on having the right options. And like Commissioner Moore said, you know, we don't want to give the easier kind of tiny option, you know, of just having a tiny open space, where maybe we could do something kind of out of the box with a little bit of something for everybody, you know, within reason. So that, that's my input. Okay, does public have any comments, Lauren?
There is no public comment.
Okay.
So this, this is no, just to try to tease into this issue a little bit more. What I'm hearing is obviously the quality of the open space is more of the, the, what we should focus on versus like the size or maybe prescribed standards. So one of the things that we hear a lot about from developers is, is that personal balconies are a big cost, both because the building code has a lot of requirements for balconies and it's only gotten more stringent since, you know, that tragedy in Berkeley happened a few years ago. But then also just waterproofing and kind of the complexity of construction gets significantly different when you have kind of a, an opening into the side of the building. Or you're bolting a deck onto the outside of the building. You know, both of those are penetrations that allow water and it just gets more complex. So would the commissioners be supportive of swapping private open space, meaning balconies and decks with kind of very usable, very accessible, more broadly, public open space shared amongst the units? Is that an idea that commission may have support for?
I, I can speak on that just really quick. I, I think the balconies, I would, I would agree with you. But I've done a lot of outreach all over Sonoma County. And there's a housing units off of, by the JC. And they have small little front yards. And they, and I can't remember which, which street they're on up in Santa Rosa. But it's, it's a lot of apartments around there. But they have these small little patios that are fenced in for each unit in the front. And they're really used well. I mean, when we went and did outreach, everybody had, you know, chairs and tables and barbecues. And I just felt like that patio little area in the front of their place was so well used. But it was also safe. They had a high enough fence where it, I think it felt safe for kids to be in there. And it felt safe to have a dog. So I think those, part of the standards of looking at this whole thing is, like Sylvia was saying, you know, you, you have to look at, is it going to be senior housing? Are they going to have pets? Are they going to have kids? Are they going to all be barbecuing outside? I think this is a lot of students. So yes, everybody's outside, everybody's barbecuing, everybody's doing their own little thing. But I just really love that whole feel of that and it felt very safe. So I go back to that because a lot of times when you go into certain apartment buildings, that, you know, like I said, I've done outreach all over Sonoma County with my company. Some places don't feel as safe. And, and I can tell you it's because they don't have a lot of open space, they don't have a lot of visibility. And it just doesn't feel as, as comforting as when I go into units like that. So those are just my comments. I, I really, balconies are neither here or there. But I think you need some kind of small patio area, even if you're just going to put a potted plant, like on Charles Street, and a little, little chair to sit outside. I think those are, those mean the world to a lot of people when they live in a very small place.
My input was going to be, if it's a shared open space, even like a covered gazebo, padding area with some picnic tables and a barbecue pit. Because, you know, some people can't go to the park and, but if they can share a space of, you know, similar to that, especially since we have nice weather year round pretty much.
And I, I guess my input was, would be on the balconies that, yeah, I mean, I agree with the, the fact that having those intrusions on the side of the building really, you know, might look attractive. But they do present costs and also long-term costs in the testing of them down the road. So having something at ground level that's much more maintainable. I mean, I've done a concrete style patio at the ground level, which is very maintainable. But you can get different styles. So something at a, a ground level. But I think it's, what's, what I've also seen is, is, you know, sometimes just being outside gives you a chance to wave at other people passing by. So that idea of, of something that focuses in on a, a community area, where you can perhaps do some passing plans. I mean, I've got to talk to more neighbors because I've been out in the front area doing things there. And you talk with people that are walking past or say hello to them. So some sort of, you know, personal space that leads on to a wider space, a wider open space of some sort. And then if, if, if there is a, I mean, having, having an upstairs area, I mean, there's different forms of being able to, in a sense, open the windows. And that's where the design standards at the moment, being very prescriptive, seem a little bit challenging on windows. I mean, I certainly like the idea of being able to throw open a window of some sort and sit in, have a, have a nook created where you can be looking out onto a space. And that happens to be a design, you know, that, that we use. Um, and that happens to be a design, um, you know, that, that we use. Um. So, so yes, on the outside, keeping it simple, but I, I guess whatever anybody wants to do on the inside would be their business if a developer had a, uh, wanted to do something um, on the inside. But how to create those open spaces and, and, and make it very simple for when there's good weather for people to get out? Or some way of neighbors to, to see each other. Should they so desire? And sometimes they're so busy, like, like was discussed really, I, I mean, I've been around um, Santero Way and taken a cycle ride and just said hello to a couple of people there to see what they're actually doing and yeah, I guess people aren't out that much, but there are some courtyards there and I don't know how well the courtyards get used. So um, that's my input. Thank you.
That sounds like that's the end of the input. Was there anyone else that had any better input or stuff?
I have a couple of comments.
Yes.
Um, I totally like the idea about having gazebo's or uh, barbecue pits out in the open spaces to make people gather and interact with each other. And also um, not getting rid of the patios, but maybe not requiring them to have some sort of wall or fence around them. I feel like that's another barrier to prevent people from speaking to each other. Um. And yeah, the courtyard on Santero Way where I, they're not really used and the uh, patios that the residents have are fairly, you know, they're good size, they're fenced, um, so you don't really see each other. So those, those were just my comments.
Okay.
Commissioner Rodriguez, if, if those courtyards had amenities such as barbecues and gazebo's built into them, do you think that they would get utilized more?
I think so, yeah. I, I've seen a few people barbecuing um, from outside of their garages. So I, I know people barbecue. So just to have a place for them to do it, maybe in a centralized location. Um, you know, their neighbors can come out and, and talk or join them, you know, so I think that's a good idea.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Hancock, did your, was your hand up or is that one before? Okay. Okay. So I think um, unless anyone else has any feedback or comments, um, staff, I think that's the feedback for this item. Um, so now I'll go on to the next one.
Really quickly, just before we go, I would like to hear, do you feel, because um, the previous iteration of the guidelines, you know, we kind of were, we didn't try to get into any prescribed design architectural styles. Do you feel that the changes made to the guidelines in response to the direction to become more prescribed and to kind of, I'll steal a, a term from Senior Planner Harry's, "catatify" the uh, the guidelines? Do you feel like the push towards craftsmen um, w- was beneficial and kind of responded to that direction?
I think it did. Yeah, I think it did kind of, it wasn't so open and ambiguous. I think it kind of just gave some sort of a direction to even builders or anyone who's interested, that, you know, gives them and even though they have a choice of siding, uh, of siding, you know, they have other options they can do or options as far as open space. But I think it's good to have um, a standard, you know, a standard as far as the, the design. Yeah, I don't know if anyone else has input on that.
I agree with Sylvia. I think some having some guidelines, I I've seen some pretty god awful architecture in Sonoma County where it looks like, I don't know what kind of standards they were using, but um, you know, I, I think once it's built, it's built. So to have good guidelines before it gets to that stage where I know we don't have a lot of input anymore on, on certain things, but I totally agree that have to have some kind of standards and craftsmen seems to be the better fix, the better fuel for, for Qatati. I mean, that's what we've done for the past thirty something years. And so I think to put in a bunch of modern, I wouldn't say all modern because I, I love co-housing and co-housing has elements of modern architecture involved in that with the, with the roofs and everything. So I think you can incorporate some kind of modern touches in with a good craftsman style. So that would be my comments.
And I think, just to kind of uh, back that up, is I think that that survey we did with the public kind of pointed in that direction of having, you know, they didn't seem to like a lot of the kind of more modern things. They, they liked the more traditional craftsman style look, you know, so that was also a good um, um, uh, temperature, like a, yeah, a temperature of the community. That's not the right word.
So, so I've got a question maybe because of that, um, just back to some of the wording. Um, on packet page thirty-eight, on the, on massing and articulation, it's got this, this, a minimum of two features such as balconies, cantilevers, dormers, bay windows, porches and individual entries shall be incorporated into each project building. Um, and I guess what is a cantilever in this sense?
A, a cantilever would be uh, I don't think you go back to the PowerPoint. Um, it would be some kind of proj- projection from the walls. It might be a part of a room that's projecting out. It has no supports from the ground. So that'd be a cantilever uh, uh, building. So on the PowerPoint is the, the project on Santero Way, which you guys have been talking about, that does show some cantilever projections. So that's what that would be.
Basically, it's, it's the fact that the building envelope changes that gives it some um.
It gives it more depth and breaks up the mass of the building.
Right, and stuff. I mean, I, I certainly agree with that, you know, that, that putting balconies out there creates something. I mean, and cantilevers, I mean, it's an old, very old technique, but how to keep it simple. I mean, they can do two choices here. Um, dormers, bay windows and porches. I mean, stuff that could be at the ground level, um. And then, I mean, a bay window that's at an upper level would be a, would, would break up that massing and be attractive. But I mean, all of that does add, add cost. Um. So I certainly, I certainly hear that, but I think that, that um, Noah Hooch brought up um, about balconies and cantilevers would be extra costly um, for this type of design, but how to, how to have that breakup of the massing at the same time and be simple, attractive. Um, and I think that's, that's creating those changing depths um, or, or the illusions of them in some, in some way.
So I would say we, we can spend more time refining that, when I think about that one some more to look at the pros and cons and uh, see what we can do with that one.
Perhaps I can make another comment. I mean, just how does it work with the roof line? There's the benefit with the roof line coming out and that really structures the way that you see the building. But it also adds expense if it isn't a straight line. So doing, doing, I don't know, perhaps doing something with that, that perhaps is just as expensive.
I think the feedback we've got, we've seen from developers, yeah, you're correct, anytime you do movement of walls, projections, uh, offsets, that increases cost, right? So that's that's kind of the, I guess, the balancing act between having these standards to get quality design and the cost. And so I think, thinking is if we can give maybe developers options that they can look at, that maybe achieve the same thing, that where they can choose, they help um, then determine what works for them. So that's why I think some of these standards, if we can give the developers options, they can figure out what, what cost wise is going to work for them in their project.
Noah, I had, I had a question.
Go ahead, John. Go ahead, Commissioner Rodriguez.
Um, what happens if a developer looks at all the, our, you know, standards and, and decides they don't like any of them and then they just want to build under SB thirty-five? Is that allowed or?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, so one of the, the, the benefits of the developers of building under SB thirty-five is the project is by right. So as, assuming they, they qualify for all the standards that the city has created to meet the architectural style that the city thinks is important in this case, it's pressing, then they can, they can kind of get in that um. Senior Planner, uh, Galworth had a good term, but it's like the fast lane. You get, you get to, you go in the, in the carpool lane and go straight to your building permit if you meet these rules. But if those rules don't work for your project, no problem. Then you just submit for a design review application and you go through the standard development review process that goes before the planning commission and get similar feedback on the architecture, but it's discretionary. And so uh, the, the balancing act, as you all are kind of understanding, you know, I'm just struggling as we're going through this process is, okay, what do we hold dear to ourselves as a community with regards to design and say, if you want the fast lane, you have to give us these minimum things? Or alternatively, you could just come talk to us through the normal process and propose a design that works for you, but we can't give you, you can't get both.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions for staff on site? Okay. So sounds where, uh, thank you so much, staff. Uh, I know it's a a lot of questions and comments. Appreciate your, uh, being receptive to all the information, feedback that we're providing. So the next item is reports by staff.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lemus. I'm gonna uh, invite Senior Planner JP Harris to give a brief update on a couple of things he's been working on before I close out the department report.
Thank you, Noah. Thank you, Vice Chair Lemus. Uh, this is JP Harris, Senior Planner with the City of Qatati. So um, two things I want to report on. Uh, one is the cottage housing. Um, we did go to the city council on April twenty-seventh and um, and presented the item there uh, for adoption of the ordinance. The city council chose not to move forward at that particular meeting with the ordinance. They did have um, some concerns about certain parts of the ordinance, particularly they were concerned about allowing cottage housing developments because of the increase in density that came with it in the um, RVL or residential very low density zoning district. This is a semi-rural uh, zoning district that has a minimum half acre lot sizes and tends to have a rural feel and they felt the cottage housing ordinance wasn't really consistent with that zoning uh, designation. Um, so we're going to look to remove that. There also was a concern about that really the trying to gauge the level of development that would occur, especially with the allowance for ADU and JADU development. Um, and especially the allowance for ADU and JADU development coupled with the fact that they will not be required to have parking. Because um, the way the state law is structured, um, anywhere in Qatati is within half a mile of a bus stop which exempts it uh, from parking. So um, and then there were some other, some other uh, concerns related to um, the size of the units and ma- and perhaps the number of uh, trying to avoid condominium or apartment style development. So we'll probably look at ways we can limit the number of attached units, like for example, a maximum of a fourplex, which was not allowed to find in, in the ordinance the other time. Um. So we'll be looking to make those changes and bring it back at the second meeting in May. Um, perhaps first meeting in June, depending on what it takes, but either way, we'll be uh, certainly keeping you abreast of any, anything that the, the city council does uh, with respect to the cottage housing ordinance. And then the other item I want to report on is one that um, we at staff have been working on with our partners, uh, the other jurisdictions around Sonoma and Marin County, um, in developing a bike share program. This was um, I'm gonna come back to you with a more formal presentation. But um, on May eleventh, I'm shooting for, if I can get it on the agenda, recommending that the city council adopt a um, a resolution that would allow Bolt Mobility, um, which is an e-bike share uh, provider and, you know, they, they, they maintain these type of systems, to operate a bike share program in Qatati as well as authorize the city manager to um, enter into a coordination agreement and sign any other documents that would be necessary to implement the program. And just for some quick background, the program um, is a result of um, a grant that the MTC awarded, which is the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, the Bay Area kind of commission. They awarded a eight hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar grant to uh, SCTA and TAM. TAM is um, the Tahoe, excuse me, excuse me, the Transportation Authority of Marin. Uh, so Sonoma County, Sonoma County Transportation Authority and the Transportation Authority of Marin received this grant um, to implement a three-year uh, pilot program for a bike share program. And these would be electric bikes. They would be, there would be three hundred of them in this program, three hundred bikes total, spread out amongst the jurisdictions um, that run along the smart train uh, line. So uh, the idea uh, that the major goals of the program are really to encourage and support the expansion of bicycle use, um, alternative transportation, um, target uh, basically multimodal transportation and allowing, especially getting to that first, what they call the first last mine. So you get off the train, how do you get to where you want to go? Uh, well, you'll be able to pick up a, uh, an e-bike, um, which would be an electric bike, which uh, is seems to be really attractive to a lot of people. Um, and it would have um, different kind of programs so that you, it's ten, you can pay as you go or you would have, be able to have a monthly subscription. As well, they have um, the equity subscription so that there, if you're a qualifying person or family, really, really reasonable rates um, in terms of renting a bicycle. Um, so look for, I guess, stay tuned. Stay tuned on the cottage housing. We'll be coming back to you with the changes that are done there and stay tuned, we'll be coming back with the bike share. Oh, and on the bike share, just so I can give you some idea of timing. So it's important that I move forward with it quickly, um, which is so that we can get the coordination agreement in place and, and work on site selection on, basically there's going to be um, stations where these bikes are made available. And currently, we're kind of eyeballing two locations in Qatati. One would obviously be the train station. And then we're also looking at the downtown hub area uh, for, for another station. But to get into that phase of uh, development of the program, we need to get the coordination agreements going, uh, signed and give Bolt the authority to, to move forward with, with their thing. And, and I will say with Bolt, um, SCTA and TAM put out an RFP and re, you know, requested proposals from a number of different uh, bike uh, operators, bike share operators, they did get quite a few. And um, uh, this one was the one that rose to the top. Originally, it was with Gotcha, which was another type of bike provider, but uh, Bolt Mobility is the one that SCTA and TAM ultimately selected. So that would be the, the operator of the system. Um, so anyway, stay tuned. We'll be coming back with that. It's very exciting though. Um, we just hope it's successful. Um, and the worst thing that could happen is it doesn't get enough use. So, so we, there'll be a whole PR uh, campaign as part of it to uh, make people aware of it and encourage the use of it. And some of that is already started. So, but that's all I have to report. Thanks.
Thank you, Senior Planner Harris. I just want to quickly add a couple of items as an update. Uh, the phase two of the wayfinding sign project was put out to bid. Unfortunately, Public Works Department only got one bid and it was uh, uh, not uh, something that we found financially feasible. And so uh, the department's evaluating options for how to potentially move forward with a rebidding. Uh, and it could have just been timing with a lot of the, the uh, um, contractors already being booked up through the early part of the summer. Uh, but we're not, we're evaluating the whys and, and looking to things we can do. But one of the things we're looking at is uh, bundling the second phase of the wayfinding project with the gateway sign project to kind of make it a larger project and hopefully make it a little bit more attractive to uh, get some more bids and hopefully make them more competitive. Uh, and just know that we did complete the um, survey for the gateway signs. The city council, we presented some sign options to the city council. They directed us to get some additional community. additional community input, and we did put out a survey, it was out for about four to six weeks, we ended up getting over thirty responses, so we're going to take that input, have our sign consultant move forward with finalizing the designs for the Gateway Signs, and then hopefully end up bundling those to try to get a better bid, competitive bidding environment, so just an update on that. And then also, the, as I mentioned, the Housing Element Request for Proposals for Catati is likely to be issued within the next two weeks. We're going to target a number of kind of, you know, planning and housing consultants, including De novo Group, who previously did our Housing Element, and from my perspective, they did an excellent job, and so we're going to hope to be able to elicit some quality responses and move forward with getting somebody on the contract right after the fiscal year ends and we have that budget allocation, so then we can really run with getting the update work going. A big part of it is doing the needs assessment, and so identifying the needs specific to Catati of the housing and, and then figuring out through the housing opportunity sites what locations are best, and I am anticipating that we will have to do some rezoning of sites in order to meet the mandated RENA, and so one of the issues is that our Housing Element Opportunity Sites have to provide enough development opportunity for the city to meet the RENA, and we're anticipating that that will result in some sites being rezoned. So just stay tuned for that. The state has completely changed how cities evaluate opportunity sites, and so that's likely what's going to be driving the need to potentially rezone, because some of the sites that were in the last, last Housing Element are not going to qualify. We've already done some kind of pre-evaluation work, Senior Planner Galbert did some work on that, and a couple of the sites just are not going to qualify. Ultimately, I don't think that'll be too much of a negative from the community standpoint, but it is going to be a process that we'll have to undertake to be able to meet the state's requirements, so I just wanted to identify that, and that concludes the report. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are.
Thank you. Is there any questions for staff on the reports by staff? Okay, so if not, we'll move on to any reports by the commission, commissioners, any reports? Not hearing any? So we'll go to the next item, items received after the agenda was closed to?
Vice Chair, can I, can I jump in for a second?
Yes, of course.
I did send all the commissioners a notice, but I do also want to repeat it here for the public and anybody else, but on Thursday, May, what is that, the seventh? Excuse me, yeah, no, May sixth, Roanoke Park is hosting a workshop to basically present and collect feedback on a feasibility study for a Highway 101 bike and pedestrian crossing system, so I want to encourage the commissioners to attend, as well as anyone else that has an interest in that. As you know, crossing 101 is difficult, we're lucky we have a tunnel, but the other crossings are, are not pleasant crossings in general, so I just wanted to throw that in, I meant to mention that during reports to the staff, so thank you for indulging me.
Thank you. Okay, so if there is nothing else for this evening, do we just, we don't have to vote on adjourn, adjourn, but we can just adjourn the meeting? Okay, so meeting adjourned at eight thirty-nine PM.
Okay, and thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, staff, thank you, everybody.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye.